Okay, we're here for our Marion County Board of Commissioners Weekly Meeting. It is Wednesday, December 4th, 2024. We're in the Senator Hearing Room at Court Street, 555 Court Street. And as always, we start with a Pledge of Allegiance if you'll join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We have nobody signed up for public comment this morning, so we'll go straight into our consent calendar if you'll move that, Commissioner.
Mr. Chair, I move the consent agenda under Board of Commissioners, OLCC license, recommend approval, U.S. Market 675 LLC, DBA U.S. Market 675 Salem, Oregon. Approve resolution appointing Jan Fritz as the county's representative to Courthouse Square condominium association and a memorandum of action electing Jan Fritz and Alan Pollock as directors effective January 20th to individuals who are not Medicaid eligible or receiving social security income benefits through June 30th, 2025. Approval amendment number 13 to the incoming funds intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon Health Authority to add $3,578,733 and 09 cents for a new contract total of $9,226,658 and 026 cents for the operation of public health services through June 30th, 2025. Approve a health-related social needs provider service agreement with Pacific Source Community Solutions that allows Marion County Health and Human Services to provide select Medicaid health-related social needs services to eligible Oregon health plan members retroactive July 1st, 2024 through December 31st, 2028. Approve the incoming funds subgrant agreement with Pacific Source Community Solutions to receive $780,395 in community capacity building funds to support the development of the Marion County Health and Human Services Health Related Social Needs Program retroactive through August 31st, 2024 through December 31st, 2028. Under Human Resources, approve the recommendation to update the classification and adjust the pay grade upward for class code 357 Civil Engineering Associate III and retitle to Civil Engineer Professional. Update the classification and adjust the pay grade upward for class codes 305 Civil Engineering Associate I, 306 Civil Engineering Supervisor, and 353 Civil Engineering Associate II. Approve an order and establish and adopt Unit 18 Marion County Sheriff Sergeant's Association establish pay grade in Sergeant Classification 172 and update the classification and uphold the pay grade for class code 128 Shelter Technician.
All right, I will second that motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none.
Just that Commissioner Bethel needs to be here one of these days when the consent agenda is this long.
Really, really long.
Yeah, like, come on.
Okay, that's a good point.
Seems like I'm always the one who gets hit with this.
All right, well, we'll see. Next week may be pretty long.
Yeah.
Just for the record, she is at a NACO event today.
That's it, yeah.
And as president of AOC, so.
She's gonna come back and be like, I wish Commissioner Willis would stop whining.
Yeah, exactly. All right. Hearing no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. First item is under the Sheriff's Office, and Commander Landers is here. Consider approval of contract services with the following agencies to provide uniforms, duty gear, embroidery services through December 31st, 2027. Welcome.
Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, Jan. So, for the record, my name is Jeremy Landers. I'm an operations commander with the Marion County Sheriff's Office. I'm here to bring forward two separate contracts for consideration of approval. The first is with Greystone Tactical in the amount of $500,000. The effective dates of that contract would be January 1, 2025 to December 31st, 2027. We did confirm that is three years, and that is what was in the RFP. And then the second contract is with 911 Supply, also in the amount of $500,000, and it's also from January 1, 2025 to December 31st, 2027. Both of these contracts do have an option to extend for two years if necessary. The purpose behind the contract is to basically have multiple vendors available to provide uniforms, duty gear, and other critical uniform-type supplies for deputies and other staff that work for the Sheriff's Office.
All right.
Questions? I want them to have uniforms.
Yes.
So do we.
And good ones.
All right. Mr. Chair, if you're ready?
Yep.
I move that we approve the contract for services with 911 Supply Inc. in a not-to-exceed amount of $500,000 and Greystone Partners Inc., DBA Greystone Tactical, in a not-to-exceed amount of $500,000 to provide uniforms, duty gear, and embroidery services through December 31st, 2027.
I'll second the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. I don't know, are you gonna do the, Sheriff's gonna do the next one? I don't see it. Commander Bernard's here. All right, consider approval amendment number one to add the city of Silverton to the intergovernmental agreement between Marion County and the city of Staton and the city of Woodburn for inter-agency special weapons and tactics known as SWAT team. Welcome.
Do you know anything about the SWAT team, Sheriff Hunter?
Just a little. If Commander, sorry, for the record, Nick Hunter, I'm the Marion County Sheriff. Good morning, Commissioners. Morning, Jan. Morning, Steve over here. Yes, I know a little bit about it, and if Commander Bernard could not be here, which I found out this morning, I do like that he leaves me such things as the IGA, the SWAT IGA, and that's what I have to come present on, so.
It's like the good old days.
Yeah, not a whole lot of preparation. We're here this morning for you all to consider an amendment to that IGA. That IGA actually started in 2017 with the city of Woodburn. In 2023, we added the city of Staton, and this is a consideration to add the city of Silverton. Basically, this IGA is additional personnel that are then assigned to work on the inter-agency SWAT team. That additional personnel helps us to offset some of the Marion County personnel that are assigned to this. There's several roles on that, on that team, so the support that we get from other agencies to help us out and the commitment just makes that team stronger and makes it safer for everyone here in Marion County. So, there is no fiscal impact to this. This is a personnel assignment and rules governing that personnel assignment, and so this is simply adding the, city of Silverton, they have added and want to add a negotiator to the team, which is great and fantastic for us, and I like the continued collaboration that we can build with the other agencies in Marion County in support of this.
Did we have city personnel before 2017, or no, it was all Marion County before 2017?
So, if you go back to the mid-2000s, this team originally was comprised of Woodburn, and there were, in fact, Staton has been part of this team before. After about 2007, I believe, it became a Marion County-only team and remained a Marion County-only team until Chief Ferrars actually took over at the city of Woodburn. And when he took over at the city of Woodburn, former Sheriff Jason Myers and Chief Ferrars put together the original to pull it back into an IGA and make it into one team again.
It seems great that you have all the agencies working together.
It's fantastic. It builds the camaraderie between the agencies. It improves the communication between the agencies, and it's the investment in something sort of larger than all of us and wanting to contribute to that, which is ultimately the public safety here in Marion County.
Yeah, and when somebody does something, hurts somebody somewhere in our community, they don't just stop at the Woodburn city limits and say, oh, gosh, I guess I have to stop here because I did it in Woodburn. You know, obviously, the whole county is impacted. Those people obviously move between jurisdictions, so it's a lot of sense to have everybody working together.
Yeah, nor does, nor does our jurisdiction stop. I mean, we, we end up all over the county, and so we, we have the chance to work with the city of Salem has a SWAT team, and so we have a chance to work with them. The state police have a SWAT team, and so it's really just creating these resources in place that are ready and able and capable of dealing with any issue that may come up here in Marion County.
That's great. Thank you, Sheriff.
Okay.
Ready?
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Chair.
Let's go SWAT it.
I move that we approve amendment number one to add the city of Silverton to the intergovernmental agreement between Marion County, the city of Staton, and the city of Woodburn for the inter-agency special weapons and tactics team.
I'll second the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Thank you, Sheriff.
Commander Bernard's appreciates your service.
Yeah, we appreciate your service, too. Okay, we are. My agenda's straight here. Item, we went from item 11 to item 12. Okay, Public Works, consider approval of purchase order with Oregon Department of State lands for mitigation payment in the amount of $117,041.80, of which an estimated $105,021.61 estimated to the penny. I love it. Will utilize federal grant funds, and an estimated $12,020.19 will utilize county funds for the North Fork slide repair project. Ryan, it's good to see you.
It's good to see you. For the record, Ryan Cruther, Marion County Capital Projects Manager with Public Works. As you said, I'm here to talk about our North Fork slide repair project, which is at milepost five. It's in the gravel section of North Fork Road where it's been sliding, so we haven't been able to pave it. This project will stabilize a portion of that. There's actually three active slides. This will stabilize one of the three. With that, we're going to do our fix with a shearkey buttress, which is a lot of big rock, and it'll stabilize that slope. But we have two streams that run through the area. Because we're using this shearkey buttress, those streams are going to have to be piped, and we're going to impact them. There's 330 linear feet of stream within the project area that's being impacted. To get our environmental permits, we have to go through DSL, which requires either mitigating or a payment in lieu, which is paying DSL for those impacts so that they can make improvements in other areas. With this, this impact is eligible for our federal grant, so that's where we see the federal share at $105,021.61, and the remaining cost is our county match, $12,020.19. Doing this will allow us to move forward with the project and move towards construction. Do you have any questions?
No. Ryan, when is the project going out to bid?
So, once we.
Not this, the actual work.
Yeah, once we get this done, we'll move on to purchasing right away from the adjacent property owner. As soon as we've purchased that right away, we're able to bid the project. Because of the amount of rock that we're going to need, it's around 110,000 cubic yards, which is a lot of, a lot of rock. We plan to bid the project this summer for construction in 2026. We want to give the pits enough time to produce that much material.
Okay, so bid the project this summer, and then they have a year to get ready to do it, and the work will be done in the summer of '26?
Exactly.
And that's a full closure of North Fork Road while we're doing this, correct?
That will require a full closure, yeah.
Okay. I've been waiting. This thing, this, that thing's been there for, I think, 20 years now. It's before my time, I know that slide.
I was gonna say, I've spent a lot of time on North Fork, and I don't remember a time when it wasn't gravel.
Yeah.
Well, it's taken us a long time to get this thing going, so.
I did, I did talk with Director Nicholas, I think, a week ago or so about this project, and he said we, we're gonna end up paving the whole area, even though there's gonna be a portion of it that's not fixed. Is that accurate, or maybe I misunderstood?
We are going to pave more than just what we fix, where it's not moving actively, but we are going to be left with a small portion of gravel with the current plan, just because what we see is, is the active slide areas, if we pave them, it causes more issues than that gravel.
From the weight?
Well, A, from the weight, and B, when it slides and that asphalt breaks up, it's harder to go out and fix versus being able to just grade the gravel that has moved. And so with the current plan, there will be a portion that's still slowly moving. We're fixing the area that's at most risk of a sudden failure or a larger failure, and then we're going to look at the rest of that down the road as we have other opportunities.
Well, thank you. Any other questions? All right, take a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the purchase order with the Oregon Department of State lands DSL for mitigation payment in the amount of $117,041.80, of which an estimated $105,021.61 will utilize federal grant funds and an estimated $12,020.19 will utilize county funds for the North Fork slide repair project.
Second the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, thanks, Ryan.
Thank you.
Appreciate all your work. Another guy who's not too busy is gonna come up here. Consider approval of amendment number eight to the standard professional services contract with Keller Associates to add American Rescue Plan Act funding in the amount of $2,730,163 for a new contract total of $10,148,212 to provide engineering design land use and permitting support for North Saniam Canyon Sewer Project. What's that? Never heard of that before.
I'll tell you about it.
Good morning, Chris.
Good morning, Commissioner. For the record, Chris Einmose, Senior Project Manager, Marion County Public Works, here to present on the proposed amendment to Keller's contract for the much-talked-about Canyon Sewer Project. So, this, this is a project that is entirely using federal funds. We received ARPA funds under IGA from Business Oregon. It includes $40 million for the master planning, design, and construction of a new treatment plant in Mill City, and it also includes $10 million for support for the Detroit Idana, although that was limited to master planning level for future sewer concepts, as well as support for interim septic systems to help repair and improve those until some point when a sewer can be funded. Since it is funded entirely out of the American Rescue Plan Act, time is of the essence because those funds must be expended by December of 2026. So, that is really the driving force for everything about the way we're contracting it, the way we're delivering this, a lot of the support that's happening ongoing. So, just to give a snapshot of where we stand, this is a very brief summary of the pieces. The Mill City Water Pollution Control Facility, AKA Waste Water Treatment Plant, we've completed the survey and the geotech for the site itself, and this board has executed a purchase and sale agreement to acquire that land. We have, using that piece of land we have, we have progressed to the 50% design stage for the plant itself. That's currently under DEQ review, and concurrently, we are going through the environmental and NEPA process. NEPA is a sort of a complex piece that is really dependent on the funding agency, and since ARPA is kind of, doesn't have a specific NEPA oversight, we're kind of doing it acting as, as the responsible agency. The Mill City Gates Force Main is the connection between the two cities that will make it possible for one plant to serve gates as well as Mill City. We've completed survey on that. We are in the process of geotechnical and NEPA clearances. We're currently doing the NEPA process just for the ground disturbance that happens for the preliminary studies, so like geotechnical borings, and we are at a 30% design stage now. The Gates Collection System is in a conceptual design state right now, as we're working through different possible alignments, trying to see where to put it to maximize efficiency and, you know, minimize things like the number of lift stations they have and the number of grinder pumps, because that will cut down on operating cost. So, that's where that stands right now. It's, it's further down the road. So, this is the treatment plant site on the east side of Mill City, and based on the property that we're carving out, the plant is designed to sit on the south side of that, and then further to the north will be rapid infiltration basins that take the effluent and pass it into the groundwater so that it can infiltrate through the soil before leaving the site. That is the only way we have available to dispose of the effluent because the Three Basin Rule prevents direct discharges to the river. So, this is a rendering, the arrangements based on earlier, that computer model, but same, same basic concept. We have a treatment plant with a sequencing batch reactor system on the actual treatment plant site itself, and the unusual aspect of these are those six rapid infiltration basins. They look like just big sand traps, and they're, they're filled up sequentially, water's allowed to infiltrate, and then the operator will just keep switching them from one to the other. This also depicts the improvements of a realignment of Fairview Street, and so that's what's going around the perimeter. Currently, the street crosses, it's kind of a gravel road that crosses the site, so that would be realigned, and we've been working with Lynn County on that. This is the latest concept for the Gates Collection System. You can see there's a fair amount of force mains, which are just basically pressurized sewer from point A to point B. That kind of allows us to keep it shallow instead of flowing by gravity. So, this is the latest concept that would collect all of the sewage from the city of Gates, take it to one lift station right there on Sorbonne Road, pump it across the bridge, and then it would be picked up into a regional pump station that would pump it all the way down. It would probably be some combination of gravity flow and pumping, but we can't go just purely gravity because it would become very deep, and you don't want to be trenching that deep out in heavy rock country. So, that's the force main alignment itself, just go down Kingwood Avenue and crossing over Rock Creek Bridge, so we have two points where we'd be hanging pipe off of an existing bridge, and then it ties into the new treatment plant to the west. So, amendment eight will take us through final design and bid phase and construction services for the treatment plant. So, that's the, that's the bulk of this amendment right now, is to, is to take us from a high-level concept that shows the layout of all the equipment and take it down to a final buildable product. Mill Gates, I'm sorry, Mill City Gates, subsurface investigation. There's some additional work there, just kind of addressing agency comments as we've done all the modeling to show that the treated effluent can be safely allowed to travel through the groundwater in that river basin. So, there's a fair amount of additional modeling work, but there's also some contingency tasks that we may or may not need, so we wanted to go ahead and get that in the contract, and that's a tracer study so that we can actually put, put a tracer, like a, just a kind of a salt dose into the water and then trace how it travels. We have our full NEPA compliance now that we are following a NEPA process modeled after HUD's programmatic requirements, and so we'll be initiating that. And there's also some more support for the Gates Collection System, but it's, it's somewhat limited here that's just doing additional geotech work and survey. So, this is the breakdown of that, this is just that portion for Mill City, which is the bulk of this amendment. Most of it's going into the wastewater treatment plant design. So, that, that impact to the amendment is about 1.7 million, and that will take us all the way through complete design. There's about, about 200 for permitting NEPA, basically federal compliance support, additional 300 for survey and geotech, and another approximately 400,000 in hydrogeological modeling. That's that final support for the groundwater discharge. And this is, this is the makeup of the Mill City Gates portion of the contract in total after that amendment. So, you can see that although, although the largest item is the actual engineering design, we have a lot of other support services going in on this contract as well. So, we have our land acquisition support, financial, basically a business model for the utility itself to operate, land use and planning support, independent cost estimator to review the construction costs and provide a, a second expert opinion, and a substantial amount for hydrogeological modeling. That is all work that would not be done in a typical wastewater treatment plant design, so it's very unique to the type of discharge we're doing. And so, and then there's about a million in so far for the pipeline design that gets us to that preliminary state. There is a small amount on the Detroit Idana portion. One thing is the closeout of the McCoy site. Since we were able to eliminate the Phase 3 subsurface investigation, we save about $200,000 there.
And to clarify, we were exploring whether or not we could put a sewer discharge system up at McCoy, and the answer is no.
The answer is no, yes. The, the approach was to find a way that fits within the framework of the Three Basin Rule as it, as it currently exists, to discharge to the McCoy site with treated effluent. Basically, is there any way that that could not be the equivalent of a direct discharge to the river? What we found in the early investigation is it just doesn't work because of the geology of the area. So, because of that, there was no need to do a Phase 3. We already had enough information to eliminate that possibility.
I just think it's important to say that on the record because I know lots of people have been interested in is a sewer system gonna be up there in Detroit? And, and we looked at it. We, we really tried. We tried to make that work, and the science just says it's not possible, at least that way, so.
Yes, and I, I would add that the, the exploration we did in Phase 1 and Phase 2 were submitted to DEQ, and those were reflected in DEQ's petition, I'm sorry, DEQ's presentation to the EQC related to our petition to change the Three Basin Rule. So, that ground-truth physical data from Detroit Idana as a, as a, you know, typical site within the Three Basins helps to show the reasons why we petitioned for specific science-based rule changes.
Thank you.
Just to clarify, Chris, this is under the existing Three Basin Rule.
Correct.
If we get that rule changed, this changes potentially.
Absolutely.
Right.
Yes.
That's, that's the issue, is that, because the subsurface, it moves too fast, is what it is, right? It's equivalent of a direct discharge under the Maui decision. Is that what we would be facing potentially?
Yes, essentially, because of the geology of the area, the only way to actually sustain a discharge is to be in the sandy soils near the rivers. If you, what we found is if you move anywhere too far away, you will encounter clays that basically refuse to accept the effluent. So, the only way to make it work is to be in a site that is, has the right type of soils near the river. With the, with the potential changes to the Three Basin Rule, the scope of that study is fundamentally changed, so there was no reason to proceed on Phase 3 until we know what that is.
And, and I think to your point, we're not giving up on a solution up there. It's just, right now, with the, what we have available to us, the answer is no.
Yeah.
Correct. We, we want to wait and see how the rule changes so that we can adjust our studies as needed for the next steps.
Yeah, and I just want to, now that anybody's watching up there, but the Canyon Weekly had an article, in fact, I sent it to Chris, that they actually printed that there would be a sewer system in Detroit in 2028. It was in, it was in the newspaper.
There's no evidence that that's gonna be the case.
Correct.
Yeah.
And so, and I think you, did you reach out to James and tell him that?
Public Works has been in contact with some project details on it, so.
Yeah, so, some people are gonna read that and go, oh, this is good news.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not true. Yeah, there was a misquote in the newspaper somehow.
Yeah, and I also spoke to John Han about it, so, we'll, but for clarity, we don't have construction funding for a sewer system in Detroit, so.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
So, and just to close, though, what I said is the total Detroit Idana portion, that's not in this amendment, that is the total in the contract as of amendment eight, is 1.3 million in engineering support services. So, that's what's resulted in our, our facility plan study for Detroit Idana, which is a, which is like a, a concept master plan, and so that is one of the deliverables that we did is provide that as a roadmap towards some future project to deliver a sewer system. Okay? So, with that, is any other questions on this amendment?
So, there's still money for the commercial septic in Detroit, correct?
Yes, that is not part of, that is not part of this contract, but there is a $3.3 million allocation as part of the IGA.
Okay, is that ARPA dollars, too?
Yes.
So, that's gotta be, that's gotta be spent by a year from now.
Correct.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, by the end of 2026.
Yeah, okay. 2026, right, two years.
Yeah, the only thing I would say, Chris, is great job.
Thank you.
I don't know why Arizona gave you up. I'm sure glad they did. You've done a great job on this, so. I know this is a, this is a really big project. A lot of people are paying attention to this, care about this, and I just appreciate the. care about this, and I just appreciate the way that you professionally marched this thing through all the different hurdles, so. We're not done yet, but, but I just appreciate your work on this.
Thank you, still a ways to go.
Yeah, one of the other questions I wrote down here during your presentation, when's the last time we, we gave Lynn County an update on this?
It's been a few months now.
Maybe, it might be good for you and I or somebody to go and just give them a short little presentation on where we're at somehow.
Absolutely.
Either have a joint work session, or we could even go down to their board session or something, just to keep them, so there's no surprises down there.
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay, we'll follow up on that. Okay, no other questions?
Okay, Mr. Sheriff, I move that we approve amendment number eight to the standard professional services contract with Keller Associates to add American Rescue Plan Act funding, the amount of $2,730,163 for a new contract total of $10,148,212 to provide engineering, design, land use, and permitting support for the North Santiam Canyon Sewer Project through December 31st, 2026.
I'll second the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right. Keep on keeping on, Chris, thank you. That concludes our regular business for today, so we do not have a public hearing. It's okay. Anything else you want to talk about?
No, I think I did most of my opinions in our voice. I didn't wait till the end.
All right, well, if there's nothing else, counsel, anything?
No.
Right, Chan?
No.
All right, well, we'll just keep on going, and we will adjourn.